All right, good evening. We'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. May I have a roll call, please? Commissioner Blake? Here. Commissioner Schaefer?
Here.
Commissioner Adams? Commissioner Silman?
Here.
Commissioner Brookman?
Here.
Commissioner Dale? Commissioner Dasher? Thank you. So before we begin, let me read some virtual information that is of essence for this meeting. Virtual information. The governor has declared a state of emergency to exist in California as a result of the threat of COVID-19. The governor also issued Executive Order N-3320, which directs Californians to follow public health directives, including canceling large gatherings. The executive order also allows local legislative bodies to hold meetings via conference calls while still meeting state transparency requirements. The public's health and well-being are the top priority for the city of Uba City, and you are urged to take all appropriate safety precautions. So to participate in a virtual meeting, this meeting is utilizing a Zoom application, as we can see for this live broadcast. For this meeting, we will be using the questions and answers functionality of this tool in order to accommodate the public comment. On your device, the question and answers section of the app is located on the bottom of your Zoom screen. For those that would like to comment during this meeting, please enter your comment into the questions and answers portion of the app, and be sure to state the item you will be commenting on. During the public comment of each item, staff will read aloud the comments provided by the public for all to hear for that specific item. Be timely with your questions, please, as once the public hearing is closed or the item has been discussed by council or commission, and voting on no more comments will be accepted for that item. So with that, may I have the Pledge of Allegiance? And Commissioner Schaefer, would you please lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of the Republic of San Francisco, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So now we have time for public comment, and this is for items that are not currently on the agenda. You're welcome and encouraged to participate in this meeting, and public comment on items not listed on the agenda can be heard at this time. Comments on controversial items may be limited, and large groups are encouraged to select representatives to express the opinions of the groups. So do we have any written requests or appearance of interested citizens at this time? We did not receive any written requests. Okay, thank you. So moving on with planning commission business. Oh! Please introduce yourself. Hi!
Good evening, planning commissioners and members of-- I'm sorry?
Could you please mute yourself if you're on Zoom? Thank you.
Good evening, planning commissioners and members of the public and the staff. My name is Dave Vaughn. I'm the new city manager here for the city of Uba City, and I just wanted to come tonight to welcome the new commissioners to what I hope is going to be a very fruitful and positive experience for you, and look forward to working with every one of you as we grow the city in the direction that the city leaders would like to. So have a great evening.
Welcome and congratulations, and we are so honored and excited to have you and your leadership. Thank you. So with that, we're going to move on to introduction and swearing in of new planning commissioners. I'd like to invite our city clerk administrator, Sierra Wakefield, to lead in the swearing.
So I'd recommend, if you're on the Teams meeting, to mute when you're not speaking, and then also, if you're running the Zoom app at the same time, to turn the volume off on the Zoom or disconnect from the Zoom meeting while you're on the Teams meeting. Sometimes that helps.
Thank you. So Sierra, how would you like to swear in our new planning commissioners, who I'm so happy to work with all of you? So we have Jackie Silman, Stacy Brookman, and Bubba Singh-Dale joining the planning commission this evening. Bubba? I like it.
Okay. So thank you for being here. Congratulations. I'm going to do your swearing in or oath of office, and then when we're finished, I'll have you sign a few documents, and you'll be official. Okay? So if you raise your right hand, please. I state your name. Do solemnly swear or affirm-- that I will support and defend-- the Constitution of the United States-- and the Constitution of the State of California-- against all enemies-- foreign and domestic-- and that I will bear true faith and allegiance-- to the Constitution of the United States-- and the Constitution of the State of California-- and that I take this obligation freely-- without any mental reservation-- or purpose of evasion-- and that I will well and faithfully-- discharge the duties-- upon which I am about to enter. Okay? Congratulations.
Thank you, Sierra. And once again, congratulations to all three of you. We're now a team. So we'll move on to the next agenda item, that of election of 2021 Planning Commission Chairperson, Vice Chairperson, per Section E-1 of the Planning Commission Bylaws. So annually, the commission is to choose one of its members as chairperson and one of its members as vice chairperson, with the chairperson presiding all the meetings of the Planning Commission and the vice chair serving in the chair's absence. So at this time, we'll conduct a vote to elect a new chairperson. So may I have a discussion or nominations?
Well, being the new kid on the block, I can take that. I understand that you have been the vice chair, and so--
Yes.
I would hope that you would accept a nomination for the chairperson. So that would be my nomination.
Do we need a second? Yeah, I'll second that.
All right.
Thank you, Jackie, John. So roll call? Vote necessary?
We're all in attendance, and so you could do it as a group vote.
Okay. Unless, Stacy or Bubba, you want to-- unless you want to stop up.
Nope.
Are you good with that nomination?
It's like, could you give me just a couple of years?
I'm giving you three. Come on now. So thank you. I gladly accept that nomination. I appreciate your faith in my skills. We'll see how it goes. So with that, I'll take a nomination for a vice chair, serving in my absence, please. And being that, if I may, Ms. Silman has-- Mrs. Silman has done this for a time or two, so I would love to nominate Jackie Silman as vice chair.
I'll second that.
Wait. You're okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay, well, I will accept your nomination. Thank you.
All in favor?
All in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Although that's always awkward, every-- each and every year.
I bet it is, yeah. I appreciate that.
No, I appreciate it as well. Thank you. So next item on the agenda, I needed to ask the planning commissioner-- planning commission if there's any interest in modifying the current agenda or approving the agenda. So if I could get a vote or a consideration for movement? All as well?
Yeah.
Okay, so I need to conduct a vote to approve the agenda. So roll call? Commissioner Dale?
Here.
Sorry, this one's for a vote, so it'd be a or nay. It'd be a or nay to vote--
Aye.
Commissioner Brookman? Commissioner Schaefer?
Aye.
Vice Chairperson Silman?
Aye.
Chairperson Blake?
Aye.
Thank you. All right, so next, we're going to move to the approval of minutes from January 27th. So unless there are any modifications, changes necessary, we'll all look for a motion for the approval of the minutes.
I approve them.
Thank you.
Nominate to approve it.
May I get a second? It's a little awkward since most of you weren't here.
Yeah, I was just going to say, would we just abstain from that?
You can't abstain, but you do have the right to vote for them.
I mean, other than reading through them, but-- I-- okay, I could second that. I'm assuming there's no errors.
All right, with a motion--
We're going to do this.
--and a second. Roll call vote again. Thank you. Commissioner Dale?
Aye.
Commissioner Brookman? Commissioner Schaefer?
Approve.
Vice Chairperson Silman?
Yes.
Chairperson Blake? Yes, thank you. All right, thank you so much. So moving on to next agenda item, public meeting. Let's see here. You guys gave me a lot of notes. Yeah, it is. So let's see. So we're going to hold a public meeting to determine Sutter County's acquisition of land and that it's consistent with the city of Uba City's general plan and zoning code. Staff report?
Right. So welcome aboard. So definitely new commissioners. It's a pleasure to work with you, and definitely, there's some formalities and all of that we'll work through. And so if any questions come up, please let me know. I'd just like to add that also as a resource for the commission, we're having-- we've contracted with Allen Scheiner and Wiener, so we have an attorney on teams. So if there's any technical questions that come up, we could always ask that from our attorney. And so Brayden Holly, I believe, is on the Teams meeting, so if something comes up, that's going to be a resource for us. So, okay, so we'll get into it. This is a pretty straightforward request. And so what's going on is Sutter County is interested in purchasing the old Kmart area, for those familiar with the site. It's at the corner of Gray and Louise Avenue. It's a 13 and a half acre approximate-sized site. And so with this, they're working through the acquisition to consolidate 17 different facilities that they have for the Human Health and Human Services Division, Department. And so with the land acquisition, they need to have the local land agencies, so the Planning Commission, review the site to make sure that it's consistent-- what the proposed use is consistent with the general plan or zoning code. And so typically, something like this would just come through, hey, a new business is looking to move over here. They would call the city planning department. They would ask, can I put an office in this C3 zoning? And it's more of a verbal or a hand-- you know, a memo or a letter that goes out. And so with this, being Sutter County government body and buying-- using public funds for public infrastructure, public buildings for public office space, there's a formal consistency that they're asking for from the planning commission to meet the code. And so, you know, we look at it, it's the areas is C3, a regional-- let me make sure I get my notes so I don't state this wrong. So it's regional commercial, C3 general commercial. And so that's our most highest intense commercial use, and it's surrounded by C3 with the railroad tracks on the south, and then you have the park, and then around it to the west and north and to the east is also C3. And so in the C3 zoning, there isn't allowed permitted use for government offices. And so really, with that review and with the location, this has really been a long time coming, that the staff finds that it's consistent with the general plan and the zoning code. And so with that, we're asking for city-- planning commission's recommendation to adopt a resolution to determine Sutter County's acquisition of land at 812, 828, 832, 840, 850, and 860 Gray Avenue is consistent with the city of Uba City's general plan and zoning code. Sutter County Representative Doug Libby is here to help answer any questions, too.
Thank you, Ben. So I would like to open this up to the public for any comment that they may have, or please let us know if there's a public comment online concerning this matter.
Good evening. For those who don't know me, my name is Doug Libby. I'm the principal planner for Sutter County. Thank you for having this on your agenda tonight. I especially want to offer my thanks to city staff who kind of went above and beyond to help us kind of in the last minute get this on your agenda tonight. So thank you very much for city staff and all of your help on this. The item before you is of importance to Sutter County for a couple of reasons. Our Board of Supervisors has adopted-- they annually adopt goals and policies. One of the goals that our board has adopted is, one, to reduce the number of county facilities. Another is to consolidate campus consolidation. This project really helps us do that for our Health and Human Services, as Mr. Libby stated. This will allow us to consolidate 17 different locations across our community into one location. That's important from just an operational and maintenance standpoint, as well as efficiency for delivering services, oftentimes vulnerable to communities who actually need these services. You know, the worst thing that people like to hear is, I've gone to the wrong building. I need to go to a different part of town. Well, this eliminates that confusion and creates one location. You know, staff feels that there could be some ancillary economic benefit because we're looking at probably a minimum of about 250 employees coming to this location once the site's been rehabilitated. And there could be ancillary economic benefit due to staff on the lunch hours going shopping and using restaurants once it gets through our global pandemic. So hopefully, the surrounding area would see that benefit. The Kmart building is 84,000 square feet, and that's the location where the county's looking to rehabilitate. So staff, thanks to staff for their recommendation, and hopefully, the commission will adopt the resolution before you. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Doug. So with that, I will open up to our commissioners and ask if you have any questions, answers, comments?
Yeah, through the chair. This is more of a question probably for you, Ben, but tonight, we are just opining on this-- or the fact that this building meets the general plan code, correct?
That the use of public office space for Health and Human Services meets the city's general plan and zoning code.
Okay. So with that, my other question is that will we get a second look at this whole thing based on all of the improvements they plan to do? I mean, I don't know how deep the improvements they're going to make to this building are. Do we have an opportunity to take a look at that at a second hearing? Or are we-- when we're done here, they're just going to convert the building however they want to convert it?
So that's a really good question, Commissioner Schaefer. The-- I would say it depends. And so it really depends on what the county proposes to do. When they own that facility, there is state law and precedent set regarding that they are able to design and construct under their building standards. However, there's a lot of intermixing going on at that location. And so the city-- Uba City Public Works will be providing water and sewer, so there'll be a requirement that they coordinate with us for the water and sewer. There's a requirement for us to coordinate with fire, with Uba City Fire-- basically responsible for the fire safety of that building. And so-- and then depending on what they do, if the size of the development, or if there's a subdivision map, or any sort of parcel split, there might be different intricacies. Plus, being good partners with the county, we know the last time we looked at participating in the design and having comments so that they meet our design standards.
I mean, I'm all for the idea. I think it's a great idea. You know, sometimes we have people come through here, and they have, you know, traffic pattern plans, and you got 250 employees coming through these streets. Is that going to be feasible? And if we don't have another opportunity to look at any of that, that's what I'm wondering at.
So if the use has changed, where it's not going to be a public office space, then it would need to come back for some sort of land use planning decision.
Okay, great. Thank you.
All right, well, I just have a comment, Doug. As you know, I've been a Health and Human Services employee for 20-plus years, and to have-- even hope, the dream, that we can integrate all of our amazing services for our highest-risk families is beyond exciting. And with that, I do have to preface that I will abstain from this vote due to the fact that I'm a county employee, so just to note.
You know, so I guess to start that, and I should have spoke up earlier. Apologize.
No worries.
Chairman and Blake, if you could leave the room for the vote--
Oh, sure.
Yes.
Give me the gavel.
So Jackie gets the--
All right.
--gavel for this.
So that was our public hearing, correct?
I don't know if we've opened it up to the--
Did we open--
It's not a public hearing, but it's open for public comment.
Oh, we're open for public comment. Okay. Let me get her notes. Okay, so we're going to open it up for public comments. Is there any on--
There are no comments online.
Okay, any public comments? No? All right, we're going to close public comment, and we will go for the vote. Or entertain a vote. And if you look at your packet, you can-- John, do you want to?
Yeah, I propose the acquisition of 812, 828, 832, 850, 860 Gray Avenue is consistent with the city's general plan and zoning code, as the acquisition of the property provides public facilities integrated into urban activity centers and meet the civic and social needs of the community. So I would recommend that the planning commission adopt a resolution to determine Sutter County's acquisition of those addresses, and Gray Avenue is consistent with the city of Uba City's general plan and zoning code.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, so Commissioner Schaefer is first, and Commissioner Brookman on second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you very much. All right.
Good job, vice chair.
What's next? Bring it.
She wants to be the chairman now, Michelle.
No. I'll wait my turn.
Moving through the chairs, quick.
I'll wait my turn. You're on to your next item, ma'am. Madam Chair.
All right, thank you. So moving on to item-- Agenda item eight. It's our public hearing, and a public hearing to consider use permit 21-01, which allows an increase of 119 square feet to the allowed square footage of the proposed Didi's Discount Wall Sign located at 700 West Onstart Road. So staff report, please.
All right, so the property in question is the future Didi's Discount location, the old Toys R Us building, southwest corner-- or I guess I should say the northwest corner of Highway 99 and Bridge Street, and then also adjacent to OG Way there. So here's a visual of the site. And so Didi's Discount is the project applicant, and they've approached us, that they're working through during COVID times and through this project to rehabilitate the Toys R Us Center and bring a Didi's Discount to the city. And so with that, they've processed a tentative improvement that they're currently working on, and then they've also done some recent work on the signs-- the pylon signs out on the frontage, and then also working through sign applications for the signage on the building. And so with this, there's been a request that they have a sign that's larger than the city standard. And so per the standard-- per the city standard, you-- in this commercial district, you're allowed one and a half square feet per lineal footage of your frontage. And so for Bridge Street, that's a-- let's see, I have the calculation here. We get into the weeds. Is it 192? So it's 128 feet. So their frontage is 128 feet times a 1.5 square foot, so their max signage that-- for facing Bridge Street is 192 square feet. And so with that, their proposal-- they're proposing to put a couple small signs lower down on the building, frontage, and then the main wall sign up on front of the building. And so with that, there's concerns from them due to the being behind Wendy's or their visibility off the road, that they're lacking visibility, and they'd like to increase that size. So staff has been working with the applicant to see what we could work out, either through a master sign program that if-- and sometimes in these locations, what we have is that if other businesses in the-- in the business park, or I would say the retail area, is willing to reduce theirs or swap credit, you know, if Rayleigh's has so much, and they're willing to swap some of their signage to another business owner, then sometimes they could work out this exchange so that the total area for the complex doesn't exceed what the code is. And so in this area, there's private owners in private interests, and so there's not-- and it's developed long ago, and so there's not a master tax exchange agreement where that occurred. And so really, each store is complying with the city standard. And so we took a look at this. And one of the findings-- one of the main findings that has to be made in order to grant the use of an oversized sign is that it's needed-- it's needed for-- let me flip to it so I get the wording right. Where are the findings? So prior to issuance of the use permit, the finding must be made that the sign is needed to advertise a business that have limited visibility from the adjacent public roadway. And so staff really struggles with this one, in that-- and implement-- the sign code was implemented to bring some standard consistency and increase our image to the community, that there puts some sort of limit on the signs that are happening in the city. And so there's a lot of effort put into that. And so with that, we're cognizant the businesses need to be seen, and there's some-- but a lot of businesses share that same challenge, you know, based on if you're in Sam's Club behind landscaping, if you're in the mall that has a lot of internal businesses, you know, that we hold that line so that there isn't just an abundance of oversized signs. Additionally, with this location, there's two pylon signs. There's a pylon sign on 99, we're going southbound. But you could see-- you could see this one. Am I pointing in the right direction? I'm trying to get this. Hang on, bear with me a little bit. Let me get this. So we have-- we have the southbound-- well, this one here is on Bridge Street, that's up on top. And then we have the-- where's the southbound? So next slide. And so here's the southbound 99 side. And so even though the store is located off to the west and it's behind the Wendy's building at a certain point, there's a large monument sign, pylon sign, that's located on Highway 99, then also on Bridge Street. And so looking at that, and then when you work through the other findings that are necessary for a new permit, that it's consistent with the general plan, and that it's not detrimental to the neighbors, it really-- it just-- it looks-- the size of it would be out of place for the facility, is what we feel that if you oversize it-- if you oversize it more than the conforming use, it starts to look out of place compared to Rayleigh's and the Joann's and the different ones in the structure. And so Didi's staff-- the project applicants represented-- And so, Didi's staff, the project applicants representative are online here through the Teams meeting, and they definitely can articulate their viewpoints on that. But from staff's point of view, we just couldn't find, we couldn't make the determination that it was needed based on the signs that were available for the pylon signs, and then the visibility of the complex. And so, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions, and I turn it over to the Didi's team to see what their input is.
Thank you, Ben. Yes, I'd like to do that, I'd like to turn it over to our applicants for any information that they would like to give commissioners on this project.
Are we unmuted, Brian? Is that microphone on?
Standby, we're having just minor technical difficulties. It's the world we live in. Thank you.
Nope, I can't hear him, Brian.
Can you have one of the other people talk and see if?
Brayden, are you available? Oh, he's muted now.
I mute myself, so you don't have to hear me cough or things like that, but I'm here.
So Jeff, we're hearing Brayden pretty well.
He might need to disconnect and reconnect.
Maybe disconnect and reconnect, and make sure you click the, use your computer audio. Yeah, Jeff, we can't hear you. I don't know if you could hear me, but can you disconnect and reconnect? We'll give it a few minutes, maybe take a couple minute break here.
No matter how hard we try, it seems to be always a little bit of technical.
What's the number for the conference phone?
What's the number for the conference phone?
Call him.
Okay.
Can you hear me? Anybody hear me?
Yay!
Yay, you're there. Hi, welcome.
Hi, my name is Jeff Aaron. I'm here on behalf of Ross and Didi's, along with a team of folks from the Didi's Development Squad, and some of those folks will chime in a little bit later as we move through this process. First of all, Madam Chairman, congratulations, and welcome to the new commissioners. I'm sorry your first time for the new commissioners is having to do a sign variance. So, as things progress in Yuba City, maybe you'll have less complicated matters to deal with. I wanted to address some of the comments that were made by the planning staff. In particular, you know, we respectfully disagree with staff with regard to the conclusion that they've reached. Well, you certainly, they're entitled to their opinion, you're not required or obliged to agree with them. And so, we have approached this project from the very beginning as a bit of a compromise, trying to find ways that we could increase the size of the sign for visibility, in particular from Highway 99. It is not, it is not, under any circumstance, an oversized sign. What we have are a lot of letters, we have Didi's Discounts, we have all of the words underneath that. We are coming into this community, we have, with a renovation of an old dilapidated store, we're hiring new people, we are looking to optimize our opportunity to be able to do the best that we can do in the town. And with that regard, we know from our experience around the country, that additional square footage on these signs makes a significant difference. And in particular, I want to just, I'll get to the sign itself on the facade, but also just with regard to the pylon sign on Highway 99, and the other one that's off of Bridge Street. I've driven that road, like many of you have, many, many, many times. And I can tell you, if you ask anyone who's driving down 99 southbound, if there's a Didi's, or there was a Toys R Us, or there's a Joann's fabric, that sign, the pylon sign off of 99, the only thing anyone remembers is the Rayleigh's. The Rayleigh's sign is enormous, relative and proportional to everything else. Our Highway 99 is over 700 feet from the facade of our new structure, our new tenancy. And if you take a look at all of the data that's been out there in terms of how to calculate these things, what should be done, there's a book, Street Graphics and the Law, I'm pulling it up here, this is published by the American Planning Association, they lay out in detail how to calculate what the appropriate size of a sign should be. And if we were to do it, they're suggesting, we would have a sign that's 75 feet tall, and over 200, I'm sorry, over 500 square feet, to be legible from Highway 99. We're not proposing that at all. We initially came into the city with a proposal that was roughly 396 square feet. We have now modified it dramatically, down to a point where we can now put the sign in place for almost 100 square feet less. And actually, I said 296, I'm sorry, I misspelled, it was 296. So, what we're dealing with is a sign that, under the code, we could actually meet the code requirements, depending on how the city measures the area of the sign. One of the challenges that you have in the city's sign code, is that it says you have to go to the extreme outer limits, and basically draw a rectangle around the sign. And so, when we went back and looked at the code itself, this is Section 8-5 something, we realized that what we could do, is that we could redraw the shape around the sign, and by the way, we did provide a drawing today to the planning staff, so if Jaspreet is there, she can put it up for you to see it. And brings down our square footage to all of 220 square feet. And the 220 square feet is a minor increase of what's allowed under the code, 15% increase, that's about it. And we tried to work with staff if we could resolve this based on this new method of calculation, but they felt it was important to bring it to the Planning Commission nonetheless. I'd also like to point out to you that the general plan, which the city planning staff has pointed out to you, talks about a number of provisions dealing with community design. What I wanted to emphasize, is there's another guiding principle in the community plan, I'm sorry, in the general plan. Under Section 4.6G3, it says that the city, the general plan, looks for design flexibility to promote economic development. It is not just that Section 4.1 that planning staff was talking about. That particular Section 4.1 also deals with just basically new development. Here we have a very old shopping center. So, those particular points, I think, are important. Also, under the general plan, the plan anticipates, and I'm quoting here, auto-oriented community development to capture out-of-town retail shoppers, that's in Section 3.8. And so, the point that we're making here is, we feel we've compromised, we feel we've found a reasonable basis for the measurement, it's minor in the overall scheme of things in the shopping center. And I think that, if you take a look and think about it from the standpoint of comparative to other tenants in the shopping centers, Rayleigh's, with its five letters, has a huge amount of square footage that they can use and apply. Joann's have redesigned their facade completely to an oval-shaped facade, and their letters, of course, are limited to their five as well. So it looks like they have much, so they have much bigger opportunity, if you will, to be able to get their message and their logo out to the community. Didi's is a newer business. We know, based on our history, that consumers, shoppers, need to understand what the company does and what it is. Also, like to ask for clarification if we might, under the code section, dealing with the measurements that I was talking about earlier, it says we can measure by using no more than 12 corners. And the drawing that we submitted today, which I would ask Jaspreet, if you could put that up on the screen perhaps for everybody to see, it has less than 12 corners, and we've remeasured it so that it captures, so that the Didi's logo. I can't see anything but a white screen, but...
I do have it up. If I share my screen, then we can't see you. Sorry, it's a little complicated.
You can hear me though, right? Okay, so there you go. So, oh, she'll make it so you can see the whole thing, but this exactly, yeah, so this now is 221 square feet, which is just 15% above the allowable. And this solves the problem for everybody. We wish we could have, you know, borrowed square footage from other tenants, but that was not practical. So, with that, I will turn to my other team members here, if they have any additional comments to add, and also, of course, answer questions from you.
Does anyone else from the Didi's team wish to speak?
My name is Tony Lee, I am the Director of Real Estate with Ross Stores, and, you know, I just want to thank you for hearing the, taking the hearing tonight for us, and I wanted to just stress the importance of signage for retailers, especially a Didi's Discount. I don't know if the commissioners are familiar with our concept. It is a Ross Stores concept, so not a lot of people know that it's part of Ross. So, I think we have one chance to make a first impression in a new market that we get into, so, you know, we're trying to just put our best foot forward here. And we do have a successful Ross store in the Yuba Center Mall, and, you know, it's just one of those things that corporate identity is very important to Ross. We'd love, I mean, we'd love to continue our success in the city of Yuba City.
Thank you, Tony. Anyone else from the Didi's team, please?
Hi, my name is Mitch Chalmers. Am I being heard okay?
Yes, thank you, Mitch.
Thank you. I'm on the team that helped compile, do the research, and compiled this project, of course, submitted, and I want to just add a few things to what you heard from Jeff, about the practical experience in the field, and, you know, no one can speak that better than the folks who live there. And if you were to follow our path in the study that we did, and what I'm about to sort of briefly mention is, this is sort of the summary of all of the details that we laid out in our, in our report, along with, that are also, it's also included in the findings, is that we studied this site very carefully, and, you know, the real challenge here is, is that there is a genuine visibility issue, you know, if you look at the photos from this point of view, not being from Highway 99, then maybe it's not very compelling. But from Highway 99, that's where the story is told. And this store is the farthest distance away from any point for a driver, and then once you get to the corner, visibility is completely obscured until you're on another street and very close to it. But the real point that I want to emphasize is, is that we did a very careful study of all the similar shopping centers in the city. And we just found that this particular combination of visual conditions is really, truly unique in the city. You know, I hope that our report goes far enough to really, to demonstrate that, but, you know, if you do drive the city, if you go to these, all these various shopping centers, then you just can't find this combination of conditions. So there is a visibility component, and we believe that that makes this a unique circumstance, and a factor regarding, you know, why the store is asking for this additional sign area. So I think that's all I have for now.
Thank you, Mitch. Thank you, Jeff, Tony, and Mitch. Before opening up, opportunities for commissioners to ask questions or voice concerns, Ben, would you like to address the clarification code section about measurements that Jeff mentioned?
Yes, absolutely. And so, to add some clarification, the project, how it was submitted for the application, with 296 feet, they're allowed to go up to this 296 square foot amount. And then, as we're working through that, today, they proposed, to break it down, there is an option in the code, that typically when we measure the square footage, I don't know if you could see this odd-shaped sign, is it coming through? So, so there's an example in the code that basically says odd, odd shape, and it's, you're higher than you're lower, and then you've got your height and width, and they've got a max, and there's a generic thing that says sign area is equal to the height times the width. And so what they're saying is that, they're proposed, they proposed 296 square feet, which was height times width. In the code, there is a section in there that's buried in there that says, hey, I could, I could go down, and as long as I make vertical and horizontal lines, like that picture's shown, and it's not more than 12 corners, we can maximize that area. And so, that came, that came up today, late in the game, but with that, they're still proposing that that, even though they're shrinking their box, and staff is cognizant and working with them that we're happy to interpret the code that way, that they could increase that box to that maximum limit based on the code, but if they want to go above that 192, it still needs to come to the Planning Commission. And so, what they're proposing today is, it's a, it's a sign, it's a sign that's, it's, I don't have, I don't know if you can flip back to what their current proposal is today, and that's what we need to clarify from them, is what's before you, are they asking now for the 296 square feet, or are they asking for the 15% over? And so, but what we've done is just, we've played a game a little bit with what size of the box that we're approving, but the sign is still 11 to 15%, depending on what wall signs you take into play, over what's permitted under the sign code. And so, with that, I'd be happy to answer any more questions. But again, staff doesn't recommend, just because of the consistency across the city, trying to, you know, treat people fair and consistently, and that with those, with those signage on the highway, that's where we're concluded with that. But we definitely understand that we want this to be a viable store, we want it to be, you know, viable for the city, and be that sales engine for the city, it just, we didn't, we didn't connect that warrant, and with staff's following the zoning code, it's still above that. The Planning Commission has the authority to approve it through a use permit if it's warranted. warranted, but they would need to make that finding that it's warranted due to the visibility for that size and they need to clarify which size they want.
And I'm happy to clarify that now if you'd like.
Sure, thank you. Go ahead.
Yes, we we would be totally okay with the 15% increase only. That's the 221 showing on the on the graphic that Ben had there a minute ago. It was on Jaspreet's screen she was sharing it. There you go.
And so to be clear, it's 15% above the total signage. And so it's not, I mean, that's where we're getting a little caught up. Is it 15% the total or 15%?
You have the proposed sign A, little box lower right, that's the that's the layout right there. 221, I can't make it bigger, obviously, but 221 roughly square feet.
And so and so Jeff, Jeff, with this with this option that you're showing, you've taken off the signs off the off the wall? Or is that the proposal with this, so there's not going to be supplemental signs on the wall? You know, I mean, I hate to design of the diast. It's it's 10% over. I guess for me, just with the consistency, staff still recommends that we hold it to that amount because at the end of the day, it's 10% enough to warrant that with the pylons. And so I definitely hear their argument and where it's at. But the the staff conclusion is that keep it with the code.
Appreciate that. And if I may comment, you know, this is an example where the code is the problem. I mean, if the code is the problem, then we need it justifies having a variance, if you will. And in this particular case, I appreciate that staff wants to stick with the with the code, but given the given the proportional proportionality involved here, there needs to be an adjustment to compensate for Didi's loss of being far off, sandwiched in the corner and having practically no visibility. Even even with the sign that we are proposing 221, it's still going to be, you know, out of hard to read for many, many people. And we just feel like we need to optimize it. And we don't see how this additional square footage is going to make much of a difference to the city.
Okay, thank you, Jeff. And thank you, Ben. Before opening a public hearing, I'd like to hear any comments, concerns, questions that commissioners may have for both staff or applicant. So we'll start with Commissioner.
Hand it up from someone. Natalie Hinkle?
Hi, I, you had asked for Didi's team.
Oh, yes.
I represent the landlord, so I didn't know if there's a section after all this for me to talk or if this is appropriate time.
Well, if you're part of the Didi's team, now's an appropriate time. Hi, Natalie.
Sure, okay. Well, good evening. Thank you for your time. I represent the owner of Yuba Rayleigh Shopping Center. I've been in the industry for over 20 years and I've been working managing this property for 15 years. As you guys know, Toys R Us moved out of our center early 2018 and it was such a blow to us, the tenants, and I can only imagine the community. So for us to be able to bring Didi's back to into our center or bring them to our center and offer this to the community and our our tenants there who have been tremendously impacted during COVID, we are so excited for them to come. And when I looked at your design where you had the the sign under the ordinance and then the proposed sign, just to me aesthetically, it looks small compared to Rayleigh's and Joann's. And as I'm looking from a landlord perspective, aesthetically, it's more pleasing for them to be a little bit larger. And then not only that, we have those large evergreen trees on the freeway and I've been trying to call Caltrans to trim those and they won't. And it blocks not only our pylons, but it blocks the visibility of the center and the signage for all the tenants. And so I I support you reconsidering the sign variance. I think bringing Didi's to the center, Rayleigh's calls me all the time asking me when they're going to open. They're very excited to have them. They bring a huge draw. In our industry, we know them to bring a huge draw to a center. We're really excited to bring them and bring that traffic that they're going to bring for the tenants that have been so impacted this year. And 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 we just would like to see them be able, you know, we we work with our tenants when they go and they want to put signage up. A lot of them don't know industry standard and what brings a draw. And so we work with them a lot to try to get them to get people to understand who they are and maximize their signage because that's such that's such an important part for retailer. And it's it's really kind of the economic viability. It's it's almost more important than from what we've experienced in talking with retailers. It's one of the most important things they need to focus on is their signage because that's what brings people in. So I appreciate, you know, any any consideration you can make to help them out and help our resident or tenants out at Yuba Rayleigh Shopping Center.
Thank you, Natalie. Thank you very much. So moving to commissioners, Commissioner Schaefer.
Yeah, so it sounds to me, listening to Ben and to the DD team, that the biggest issue really is about setting precedents. Sounds to me like the city is concerned that if we give you the ability to increase your sign, whether it's warranted or not, that they're afraid other people are going to ask for increases to their signs, whether they're warranted or not. So I had a I had a big concern reviewing this material about an increase to 296 feet. I did the drive myself both directions on the 99, which it sounds like that's the Didi's biggest concern is visibility from the 99. I didn't see it as a major issue. I saw your your signs, you know, that were already there, that are on those boards, the sandwich boards, clearly. When I drove the 99 north and south, particularly going south, seeing your, you can clearly see whatever sign you're going to put up on the building from that direction without having to worry about it being blocked by Wendy's. Going north, yes, it's blocked for probably about a five or six second portion of the drive. And I'm not sure if increasing the signage is going to, you know, make a difference to your customer base by 10 or 12%. But I think at that size, I I no longer really have a big issue. I don't think the setting of the precedence is going to be that concerning moving forward. And we have to take each of these one at a time. I don't think we should deny you because we're concerned about other people, you know, having issues down the road. We just have to take each of those as they come and whether they're warranted or not. So I would be in favor of a 221 square foot sign. I probably would have not at 296, but at 221, I think we should seriously consider that.
Thank you.
Through the chair?
Yes.
I think I'm on. So I had a just a quick question, too. So on the conforming, is there going to be one on the Bridge Street side as well?
Correct.
There is, okay. That's what I thought. So I I drive by every single day because I go down Bridge Street. And I have seen your building, I'm excited. I can tell you, everybody in Yuba Sutter is waiting for you to get here. We're all excited about it. I don't think there's a secret that you're not going to be there. I understand your concerns on 99, but I'll tell you, those signs are huge. I, and again, I think we talked about changing the ordinance. I think we have to, my world, I feel like we need to follow the rules. We need to stay with where we're at. I know it's just a it's 15% and here and there, but again, what makes us think the guy across the street now is going to say, wait a minute, I need a bigger sign over here? But I I do want to assure you, we welcome you to Yuba City and those your signage is great as it is now, so I I'm not in favor of extending. So that's just mine.
Thank you, Commissioner Silman. Commissioner Brookman. Okay, Commissioner Dale?
No comment.
Okay, thank you. And I have a tendency as well to to agree with Vice Chairman Silman, mainly because I've been around for a minute and remember recall the the depth of the signage code or discussions in which we had. And our main focus was to increase beautification efforts, especially in our corridor, and not to say by any means that a larger sign would indeed do that. But again, it is the precedence and we we had a depth of discussions around that. So I choose to be a rule follower as well. So with that, I'm going to open a public hearing.
I have one other question through the chair.
Oh, absolutely.
Just a clarification for my own purpose.
Yes.
Does the signing of this lease and bring and moving into this building hinge on being able to have a larger sign?
I'll defer to the group, but my understanding is the tenant improvement building permit has been planned and they're actively working in there now.
But I guess I'd ask the DD folks, I mean, are you going to still come to this city and open up this store if we don't approve the additional increase in your signage?
I sure hope, I hope so.
I defer to Tony. I don't think it's an issue.
No, it's not an issue. We just, you know, always like to put our best foot forward whenever we open up a new store, especially a new market for for the Didi's concept. And, I mean, will we open? Absolutely.
Okay.
I'll be your first customer, I promise.
Just wanted to make sure.
Because I drive by it every night.
Chairman, if there's a chance to address the issue of precedence, I'd like to respond to that when there's a chance.
Thank you. Why don't you go ahead and do so before public hearing? Thank you.
Thank you. I mean, I hear some of the concerns of the commission about precedence and I think that it's really a non-issue in this particular case. I can't think of another situation where you're going to have 725 foot setback from the highway blocked by a row of very tall trees with and also on the corner having a a Wendy's or any other kind of fast food blocking visibility. So from the standpoint of precedence, it's not really a compare, it's not fair to make a comparison on any future project. And as a matter of fact, when I think about the notion of this being used for some other applicant who's requesting larger signage, it reminds me that the whole idea of this revised general plan is to create shopping centers that work better, one of the ideas. And and it just, if you could redesign the shopping center in a different way, there would have been more foresight put into how are we going to get the tenant in the back to have visibility on 99? Are we going to allow really tall trees to grow along a highway? Are we going to require that Wendy's on the corner permit tenants to have advertising other than on that particular parcel? So honestly, it really is not an issue of precedence. And we haven't even argued precedence in terms of other variances that may have been granted in the city for that reason.
Thank you. Thank you for your input, Tony. Or sorry, Jeff, sorry. My apologies. So at at this time, I'm going to open a public hearing. So anyone interested in giving a comment? And Jaspreet, do we have any comments online?
There are no comments online. We did receive one public comment through the mail.
And you will read that for us?
Yes. So this is from Security Owners Corporation, dated March 3, 2021, regarding Use Permit 2101, Didi's Discount Store. Our company owns the 92 apartment at 1491 Bridge Street. We are pleased that the Didi's Discount Store does exist in our neighborhood. However, we oppose the huge expansion of wall signage because it will demean the character of our neighborhood. Nothing cheapens the neighborhood character like overly large, obnoxious signage. The quality of this signage will also say a lot about who and what Yuba City is all about. Please do the right thing here. Thank you, James J. Busby, President.
Thank you for that public comment. Anyone in the audience wish to speak on this matter, public comment? Okay, hearing done and no other additional comments online. I'll close the public hearing. And any other additional comments, concerns, the commissioners may express at this time. Otherwise, we'll look for a motion.
I'm trying to find my notes, but I can, I'm assuming this is what I'm reading. So I would, are we ready?
Yes.
Make a motion to, is this what I'm reading? Recommendation to conduct a public hearing and deny approval of UP 21-01 based on the insufficient findings required by the zoning code, Sections 8-5, 7003, and 8.56309B1.
All right, so we have a motion. Any one second. Thank you, Commissioner Brookman. So we have a motion and second on the floor. I will have a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Dale?
Nay.
Commissioner Brookman?
Nay.
Commissioner Schaefer?
Yeah, just I want to make sure you're you're saying to the motion was to deny the approval. So a nay is saying what?
Correct. So a nay would be, so a nay would be to approve.
Yeah.
A nay would be to disapprove.
I just want to make sure you guys understood that you're saying you're going to, you're okay to approve it.
Yeah.
That's what you're, that's what you're saying.
You're okay to approve it.
Okay. Okay, I just want to make sure that you were clear on that.
Got it.
No, I don't want to approve it.
Okay, so you're going to agree with the motion then?
Correct.
So you'd be a yes.
Got it.
I I will be a no because I would like to approve it. I would like it to be allowed on to the increase. So I'm a no.
I'm a no as well.
Thank you. Continue, Jaspreet, thanks.
Vice Chairperson Silman? And Chairperson Blake?
Yes. So we have a 3-2. Motion passes for
Denial.
The recommendation before us by staff.
And so, thank you, commissioners. I know that's a tough decision right off as the first meeting for many of you. And I just, for the for the Didi's team on staff, absolutely, city staff is going to look to work with you on the measuring the sign area based on that 12-point and what we can do to maximize it within that that allowed area.
Right. And and again, through the chair, I'm very excited that you're coming. We look forward to having you here and Michelle and I are out in the public a lot, so we will help market, we promise.
Absolutely. Thank you. All right, so we'll move to item number nine, public hearing to consider Use Permit 21-02, which allows the use of the existing buildings as a sports recreational facility located at 350 Bridge Street, Space D. And I'm going to turn this over to Ben at this time.
So what we're asking from staff is that we've noticed this, we've received an application for a CrossFit type gym at this location, 350 Bridge Street, just past the the city's proposed redevelopment area there at Shasta. And so applicants put in for an use permit. In that zoning, in order to facilitate a gym, you need to have a use permit, which would come to the planning commission for review. We're asking for, with it being noticed, we need to collect a little bit more information and then write the staff report. So we're asking to continue it to a date certain, March 24, 2021. And so with that, it would take a vote.
Okay. So do we need a motion and a second for the vote? Yes. Okay, so I'll take a motion to move this agenda item to the March 24 meeting?
I'll make a motion to move this agenda item to the March 24 meeting.
Thank you, Commissioner Schaefer, in a second, please.
I'll second it.
Thank you. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Dale?
Aye.
Commissioner Brookman?
Yes.
Commissioner Schaefer?
Yes.
Vice Chairperson Silman?
Yes.
Chairperson Blake?
Yes.
So that shall be returned to us very soon. So with that, we'll turn to future agenda items and back to you, Ben.
So what we have brewing internally is the Harzer Specific Plan. And so for those familiar with it, it's the the area there at Walmart and across the street there to the west, there's some vacant land. And so with the Harzer Specific Plan, there's there's been a lot of activity behind the scenes regarding a Harzer North, which is residential subdivision map, Harzer South, which is a residential subdivision map, Harzer Marketplace, which is a multi-unit commercial complex that's directly across from Walmart there at the Signal. And then with that, in order to facilitate that, we're also having a general plan amendment, a specific plan amendment, a rezone. And then with that, there's updates to the development agreement and then also with the finance plan. And so there's this huge documentation in order to get this all in line, to line up and then move it forward. And so over the last year, we've been making progress on that and we're getting real close. And so what we've set up is that for next Wednesday's meeting on March 24, we're going to have a special workshop with the council in the chambers here. And so it's basically for an hour, it's going to be the council up at the front, the planning commission in the back, basically, due to the space, we couldn't find, I was looking for Boyd Hall or the senior center or different, but due I was looking for Boyd Hall or the senior center or different, but due to the, due to the technique, in order to make it work for Zoom and work for everybody, that's where we've landed. And so what it is, is really an hour-long workshop to bring new commissioners up to speed on that development. And then also a new council member that hasn't, that's new this last round. And so it's really to have kind of a quick workshop to bring that up. And then after that, immediately following that, we'll have a planning commission meeting where we'll then consider this use permit for the gym. And then do we have any, and then possibly Faith Court subdivision. So there's a, there's a, currently a 10-unit subdivision there right behind the Methodist Church there. It comes, the access is off Monroe. And so there off Monroe, there's an existing approved 10-lot subdivision. And what they want to do is come back to us for consideration to turn the road into a private road, and then split it into 17 lots. So the same land, make the lots a little smaller, make it a gated private road, and with that reconsider it to what they think they can make it financially viable to do. And so those are the items on the next meeting. And then most likely, what you'll see is the, following April 14 meeting, is that we come back with the Harter information, and then have that as an actual vote, where there'll be consideration on those maps, general plan, rezone, et cetera. And so that's a lot coming towards you, and definitely keeping us busy just with, with staff, and trying to keep the agendas going out and keeping that to you. So definitely, any questions that come up, let me know. But that's what's on the horizon for future agenda items.
Wonderful. So March 24, to clarify, still begins at 6:00 PM?
Correct.
Okay. Any questions, Ben, for that?
No, I do have a question on Monroe. Are we going Butthouse West and Monroe to the left? No.
So it would be east of Roya Ranchero. So if you, if you're, take Highway 20, George Washington, Frontage, you turn and go northbound on Roya Ranchero, you'll turn right on Monroe. And then if you go almost to the dead end there on the bridge, on the south side is the field for the faith Christian school. And they've, they've split off a little segment, a 10-acre segment there. I don't know if it's 10 acres. I can't, it's not 10 acres.
You can visualize it now.
But there's, there's a segment there right adjacent to the football field.
I'll drive by there.
And it's adjacent to the recently approved Dunn Ranch subdivision that came through from Inner West. And so it's, 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 and so we'll try to show some good visuals there.
Okay, great, thanks.
All right. Is that develop, your development report, too?
No, I could, you know, I would go ahead and, oh, sure, so I'm up next. Okay, I was thinking, I was waiting until afterward. So, you know, with the developers, directors' report, I don't have a lot. There's been a lot of activity at the city council level recently regarding growth policies. And so what's going on is in 2005, the city established these 12 growth policies. And what that came from is in 2004, late 2004, we adopted the new general plan. The economy was booming, there was a lot of demand for development. And so what they did, they, they put in a backstop, basically. And in early 2005, they, they set these growth policies, and they call them the 12 growth policies that the council adopted that went from, they went through these different items that talked about, you know, requiring that, that developers pay school melloruse fees. They require that developers have a development agreement if they're outside the city limits. If they're outside the city limits, they need to first obtain water and sewer from the city. And so they really went through there to try to put that backstop and implement the general plan, because the general plan was so new, they didn't have controlling documents in place to force that general plan implementation. And so what's happened since 2005, 16 years later, is that it's out of date. Those 12 growth policies are really out of date, where we've, since then, we've had updated housing elements to talk about the housing. We've had updated water and sewer master plans that weren't in place, that are now in place, that supersede that. There's been council policy set a couple of years ago that specifically talked about situations where we will serve water and sewer outside the city limits if they enter into agreements and they meet these terms and qualifications. And so what staff is doing, they've directed staff to analyze those and bring them up to date. I mean, everything from legally requiring a DA, there, there's new state law that, you know, there might, it might not be legal to force somebody into an agreement. Basically, a development agreement is two parties. You're not supposed to enter into a contract unless they're both willing parties. And so having that, those terms, then even from the school melloruse, it's, it's really, it's a business decision for the developers and the school district as far as if they pay the impact fee versus the melloruse. And so the, the city's looking to just update that, clarify, get it. We feel that there's backstops still in place with the new plans that have been in place with the water plan, the master plan, policies in our zoning code, that now we don't need this, this out of, this, this 12 growth policies that's not relevant. And so there's a lot of action happening with that, that's happening over the next month or so on, at the city council level. And I'm sure that will also come into play on how it affects future developments into the city here. So with that, I'm excited that I have a new assistant planner, Ashley Potcheneck. She's, she's just wrapping up her onboarding with the city. So I'm hoping to have her start with us next week. And so you'll probably see her in the future at our planning commission meetings here also. I'm trying to think besides that, Jaspreet, do we have anything exciting? Just keeping the wheels on the bus. So if there's anything I could answer, if anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Oh, yes, very important. And so typically, annually in the bylaws, the, there's a Sutter County representative that we pick that then goes sit on the Sutter County Board. And so I left it off the agenda today because last year, the council set a precedent, because what happens is we pick, and then it goes to the city council. City council approves it, then it goes over to the Sutter County and then initiates it. And so the, the city council, they, they would like to interview, just so they have an idea who, have that connection with the planning commissioners, see whoever's interested, you know, and so then when they make that recommendation, it goes through. And so additionally, I knew Ms. Blake, the chairman, was in a position to vice chair to potentially go up, and I wanted to vet that there's not a potential conflict with that, with it not just being an automatic chairman going to, to the thing. And so most likely, at the next meeting, when I get a little bit more information about potential conflicts or who's interested, I'll put out some information to say, hey, if you're interested in being the Sutter County representative, please let us know. And we'll set up a quick meeting with, with the mayor and whoever he wants on that team, and then we'll make the recommendation and move forward.
Thank you. And thank you for remembering my situation. So I appreciate it.
Should I tell you now? No.
So what I, what I would like is anybody interested in being the Sutter County rep, please, please think about it, and, because it will be coming up here in the next meeting or so to make that decision.
Okay, so, and, and unfortunately, I would still call him Chief Dosher, but Commissioner, Commissioner Dosher is our liaison from Sutter County, and he's not here tonight. So usually, we have a report from the Sutter County Planning Commission, but with no representatives and, and, correct, there's no update concerning that item?
Through the chair, can I just, I know we're getting ready for adjournment, but I, Ben, I really thank you for guiding us through the process tonight with the signage. That is something, of course, I never had to deal with on the Sutter County side, but I was on that commission with, to help for the signage. But what I'm saying is, I love that you enter, you know, you're going to work together to make it happen. And I thought that was, I just appreciate hearing that, so thank you.
Absolutely, and it, I totally understand the other commissioners' point of view. It makes me cringe a little bit that I can't be flexible to the 10%, but I'm trying to, I'm trying to set the standard, and that really came in last minute. And we're really playing, the sign is still big. We're playing a game with the area now on how we're calculating it. So even though it's 15% over, we're really still at that 50 to 60% on how they play with it and how they move it around, compared to what we have for our standard signs around there. So we're, it's, it's very visible, and we're going to work within, we're going to bend over backwards as much as we can to try to make it as visible as possible, and work with the landscape and everything else to make it great.
I know you will. Any other comments from commissioners? All right, well, prior to, I think, yeah, adjournments next. So thank you again for your, I guess, faith in me for electing me as your chair. So I'm, I'm more than happy to step up this year. And congratulations again to you, new commissioners, excited to work with you guys. Yeah, good to see you guys. Lynn says, I've been there, I've done that a million times. Jackie, come on. Every night would be about you, otherwise.
That's her world, he's just living in it.
Yeah, literally. And John, I'm super happy you're still here. Oh, gee, right here. And, and to staff, as always, I, you know, mimic what Jackie said. Thank you for your guidance and for always being there for us when we have lots of questions, and for your ever, never-ending expertise, so thank you. And with that, it is 7:22, we'll adjourn the meeting.